Councilmember. Jones.
Here.
Councilman Hairston.
Present.
Councilman Fareed. Councilman Ferguson.
Here.
And Councilman Curtis is here. That is seven in attendance. I would like to let the audience know that this meeting is being recorded. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman Harry.
Yes, I'm going to ask that we reschedule this meeting and I'm asking that because the copy of the budget that we were given is the fourth copy of the budget of this, of the twenty-two FY twenty-two budget. This is not the budget that came to the public hearing and it is not fair to the citizens to work on a budget that they have not seen. Uh, the budget that came to the public hearing had a, a totally different amount. Um, I went through that budget and the numbers have changed in various departments versus the one that we got tonight. And I think that we need to be working from what was approved, um, section and, um, the changes were made to that budget and no changes should have been made after it came to the public, after it uh, came to the public hearing. Um, section eight, eight oh six of the budget says that, um, after the public hearing, the council may adopt the budget with or without amendments and that's the budget we should be working on. Um, we need to make sure that the citizens get the right one for Thursday's meeting. I'm just saying it isn't, it isn't fair to the citizens and it isn't being transparent to have all these numbers move around and they don't know what they have. The only thing they have in front of them is the fact, the budget that we had come to a public hearing on five eighteen, on May eighteenth. So I'm asking that this meeting be, um, rescheduled for another day and that we be sure we have the right information for Thursday's meeting?
This is the budget that was submitted and put online for, um, our citizens, uh, I believe it was yesterday or Friday, right, Ms. Jones?
It was Friday.
Friday.
And the mayor cannot submit another budget after he submitted it, after it has come to a public hearing. He cannot submit another budget. That budget is supposed to come to the council and we're supposed to make whatever adjustments that nee- that needed to be made. If he wanted adjustments made or he had some other concerns, he should have sent the council memo for this work session so we could address those issues. But right now the citizens don't have this budget. Um, it wasn't advertised, the budget has to be advertised. Only budget that was advertised was May eighteenth. This is a totally different budget and it got one point six million dollars in additional revenue in it. So it isn't fair to the citizens to have them, uh, uh, try to follow along with us and all these numbers have changed and a lot of the numbers have changed. They've increased spending in, in the councils, uh, area. The numbers don't tie to what was in the number of the, uh, departments that were in the five eighteen budget. And we should be working from the May, uh, the May eighth, May, um, eighteenth, uh, budget that was submitted and that went into the newspaper for the citizens to see. So. I'm just saying, I think we need to make sure we have the right information that the citizens can follow along with what we're doing and we be transparent with them with all the numbers that we are going to sit here and discuss tonight because all the numbers are not the same. There's a lot of numbers that are different from the May eighteenth to this, this, uh, 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 one we got for tonight.
So you're not saying that the numbers that we have tonight has changed since we had it on Friday? You're saying that this is different from what was given in May?
This is, this is different than what was advertised in the newspaper in May.
Okay, Councilwoman, uh, Woman Jones?
Um. The, um, budget does have some changes in it because it added the cares money, which we just found out a, a little bit about what we got. The other changes that were done was because the monies that was, uh, uh, submitted for the council's, uh, increase that, that figure needed to be changed. We all knew that that was going to happen, but for some reason it didn't get changed and the, um, I think the, um, the finance department changed that along with the former city manager, Mr. George, and then the, um, any other changes that were made were changes that, uh, the council in looking at the budget uh, had brought up to the finance department and Mr. George to have those things changed. Uh, Mr. Stewart is on here. Uh, he just, the only thing he added was the cares money. That, that would have had to been added to the budget.
Anyone else? Uh, Councilman Fareed?
Yes, I agree that this three visions that were made seem to be the ones that were discussed um, in that hearing, uh, when items were pointed out that needed to be corrected or that potentially there was more monies missing. So this would appear to me to be the amended budget that we're now about to review, which the charter says we can adopt a budget with amendments.
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
With, with all due respect to all of my colleagues, I'd like to, you did mention, you did reference Mr. Stewart is on this call, so if if it's possible, will, are we able to hear from him, um, about the set changes? Or no? I'm just asking.
Yes, he, he and the mayor is, uh, is able to speak on the budget and the amendments that they, um, they have made to, to the budget for transparency to the, to the, um, citizens of Glanard. And so, so yes. He's here.
What a order, um, Mr. President. We have not yet gone into work sessions, so we're asking to discuss the budget. We have not yet gone into a work session to even get the agenda on the floor to discuss this. Um, I'm just saying that again, what was advertised to the citizens, what was put in the newspaper is what we should be looking at in front of us right now. No matter what we went to the attorney, what we went to the treasurer or the city manager and, uh, and talked to one-on-one, this should have been discussed, city business should have been discussed in public so everybody can hear what we're saying so that we can be transparent to the citizens and allow them to hear our discussion. You know, I should not have to as a council member get this two days ago and then have to say, okay, well, these things were added in here, but you know, not knowing any background on it, we should be able to discuss it at the table and everybody should be able to hear what's going on, not cherry picking what you want to do or what you want to get. I mean, there's a number of things in there that I want to address. I didn't take it to them because my thing is I've discussed this at a work session so all the council members can hear what's going on. So I think it's unfair to the citizens and I don't think it's very transparent to have a, uh, to spend money on a, on, and when the charter says that the budget shall be advertised and after advertisement, then the council works on a budget. So that means that budget, that budget that was advertised should not be changing at any point until we get it. Once we get it and we decide to make some changes, then we can be transparent and let the citizens know this is what the mayor submitted. This is what we're going to change. If the mayor has some changes, he should he needs to submit a memo and, and, and let us know and we can discuss it in a work session and everybody can hear what's going on.
The charter does allow us to make amendments to the budget, correct?
After the public hearing and that's the bu- and that's, and that's the, and that's the budget that you work with, not any other budget. We've had three budgets after the eighteenth. We had, we've had two other budgets after the eighteenth. We got one on May twenty-first and then we got this one.
Which are amended budgets?
No, they're not amended because we have not amended anything because we have not voted on it. So you can't amend anything if we haven't discussed it as a, as a council to agree to these amendments. One person shouldn't be able to go into the finance office and make a change without the rest of this council discussing it. That's what the amendments that, uh, the, uh, charter allows for council discussion. It says the council shall amend the budget, not individuals.
And that's what we're here to do tonight, to discuss it.
But you're, but you're, you're looking at a budget that the citizens have not seen. We're looking at a budget that the citizens have not seen this budget. This, this was not advertised in a newspaper. This was not given out to the citizens. This was not set out for the citizens. They still got the five, the, the budget that came to the public hearing. And that's, and, and, and to be transparent to the citizens, we should start from that point and let them know every change that we're making from that meet, from that budget that they've had from May eight, May eighteenth, because they probably got that budget sitting in front of them right now. Whether they do it, whether they don't, that's where we should be starting.
So you propose that we wait until Thursday to, to review this budget?
Uh, no, I'm, what I'm asking is that we go to, we go to Thursday and we use, start with that five eighteen budget and we can see everything that they, that needs to be done. We need to let the citizens see where we, where we, where we are going from that budget that was advertised in the newspaper from May eighteenth. So if they got all of these changes that they have, all they gotta do is shoot a memo to us. We can have it on Thursday. We can just go down the line and discuss it and then the citizens will know what we're doing. Right now they don't know what they, I mean, every individual council members went to the finance officer and had changes made to the budget. I'm not, I'm not understanding that. That's not something that should happen. We should discuss, we should discuss this as a group and, and, and as a body, as the charter says, the council will make the amendments, not individuals. So that five, we need to get the five eighteen budget that was advertised in the newspaper. That's what we should have on Thursday and that's where we should start. If they had, if the mayor or the administration have additional changes that they need to make, they need to give us a memo so that we can have that memo for us on Thursday and we can discuss and show the citizens, this is what's changing in this budget from that, from the budget that we advertised and why we're doing these changes.
Uh, Ms. Fareed, I'm sorry, Councilman Fareed?
Yes, I think I'm just a little thrown off because one, as council members, we, we knew that we were going to be having this meeting, so I'm, uh, you know, I'm not sure why we're talking about whether we should have this meeting now, right now. But also I don't think we're saying that individuals, council members, we do have to make extra changes. What I am saying is that the changes that were discussed at the, the hearing of what is reflected in here, and we're going to discuss how the numbers went from what they were to what they are now in this work session. That's what we're working. I mean, I reviewed the budget and I have questions. I think most of us have reviewed, if not all of us have reviewed and have questions and that's what we're going to be discussing. So the citizens will get the benefit of that. We also need to keep in mind that today is June twenty-ninth and this budget is due June thirtieth. So delaying for, I'm not sure what's the difference between producing a memo between now and Thursday would be versus discussing those points in the meeting when the appropriate parties are here to be able to address whatever be in the memo.
Okay. Well, I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Fareed. I think any changes that were made, Mr. Herron, to the budget between May that you're discussing. Um, and now I, I, I do remember it coming to a public hearing and us discussing them. Uh, if there are changes that you have issues with, I, I welcome you to challenge them, uh, here in this meeting for transparency in front of the citizens. Uh, our assistant, uh, treasurer, um, acting treasurer, I'm sorry, uh, Stewart is here to, to explain the changes if, if there were any that you have concerns with and we can address them here in front of our citizens.
Okay, so, go ahead.
I just, I just, I, I'm, I also don't know what delaying this for two days is going to do if we're going to two days bring forth the same budget with the same amendments.
No, I'm not taking, I'm not saying bring forth the same budget. I'm saying bring it forth, the budget that was advertised in the newspaper at May eighteenth. Then the citizens can see what is actually being changed. My thing is this, these people went to the treasurer and other people went to the treasurer and had changes made. And as a matter of fact, we had a public hearing. That public hearing was to, was to hear from the citizens. That this council did not speak on that budget. It was not for the council to speak on that, but that was for citizens' participation, not for the council. So this right here is where the council have to speak. So any changes that they made due to what the citizens said might not be what this council wants. So why would we go with, uh, 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 changes that were introduced by uh, uh, citizens? Yeah, we can take it under consideration. We can, we can, we can include that in some of our discussion, but this is where the council sits with the information that we have as of May eighteenth to make these changes. So like I said, I just think that, um, uh, uh, we need to be transparent with, with this, but with the budget. We need to let the citizens see where these numbers are going. Uh, they need a clear, a, a clear understanding what happened as of, from when that budget was submitted in May eighteenth, because that's exactly what budget we would have used if we would have stayed on track. But it, but, but, um, you know, I just think it's not transparent at all. I think citizens and I, uh, uh, are not getting the, uh, benefit of being able to see where we're going from one budget to the next when there were two budgets in between there. One on May twenty-first and this budget here. So.
Thank you, Councilman Herron. Uh, I agree that we should be transparent with, uh, the citizens and I think that we will accomplish that here today. Uh, Councilwoman, uh, Ferguson, uh, not Ferguson, uh, Robin, you can have the last one before we, um, move on.
Changes that were made were made by the city manager because of, uh, issues that was brought to him by council members. They weren't, it wasn't any individual person that went to the treasury office and told them that things needed to be changed. The CARES Act money that went into the budget was because they had gotten information to put that information into the budget. It, it wasn't that, um, you know, that some council, any council member went to the finance officer and said, make these changes. These were changes that were going to be changes anyway. Uh, the, uh, council salary that was, uh, approved and, uh, by resolution and for some reason they just forgot to put uh, include the increase in, in that line item and that's all they did. So.
Okay. Well, thank you, Councilwoman Jones. Uh, we will continue, move forward with this meeting. Um, uh, and we will, I will lean on, uh, Acting Treasurer Stewart to, uh, go over the budget that was, uh, that is now and, and update the citizens on the changes that was made from the, what was presented to them, uh, last to, to, to now. I think that's fair and transparent. So we will not delay this meeting. There was one thing that I did want to add to.
Point of view, Council President.
Some motion on the floor.
We need to take, um, uh, to adopt the agenda. We need to take, uh.
Yeah, so we had a, we had a motion to adopt agenda, second in the discussion. Um, and I was going to add just one thing to the agenda before we adopted that.
Sorry.
Um, and I just wanted to say that if we can get through this budget in a timely fashion, that I will just want to add other budget items. Uh, if we could, if we do, uh, get, uh, through this in a timely manner, we may not, but did not want to exclude that from the budget. Um, and just, um, I'm not bringing forth the resolution, but the introduction of resolution, one thing that we left out, uh, is the, a resolution to increase the, the stipend for the workers of the election in this budget. So I wanted to, uh, make sure that I, um, at least alert the council uh, to that. No resolution is being brought forth today, but there will be one brought forth, uh, soon. So, um, just wanted to briefly touch on that. Uh, so, um, those are two items to add to the, to the agenda. And now we can vote on agenda, correct, Ms. Councilwoman Jones?
Correct.
And I get, oh, sorry, the council, quick, it's not here. So we'll have a vote to adopt the agenda. Councilwoman Jones?
Yes.
Councilman Fareed?
Yes.
Councilwoman Delmar?
Yes.
Councilman Hairston? Councilman Hairston?
Hey, I'm here.
But you're on mute now and I think you were breaking up.
Um, yes.
Councilman Harry?
Let me say, I'm a, I'm a vote no, and I just want to make sure it's reflected in the record.
Okay.
Um, about my objection to a violation of section eight oh, eight oh six. So I just want to make sure it's in a minute. Thanks.
Councilman Ferguson? Councilman Curtis, yes. All right. Uh, so I'll just briefly touch on before, um, I asked, uh, I opened up for the, the budget discussion, briefly touch on that we, in the last meeting that we had, uh, for the citizens that are on the, the call, for the last meeting that we had, we did um, pass an emergency ordinance to have funds to fund the special election that is now happening on July the twenty-sixth. Uh, but what we did not do, what was included in that budget was an increase in stipend for, uh, the people who have worked so hard to, uh, put on this election on election day. Uh, and, and all the work that goes into it. Um, but we did not bring forth the resolution uh, to increase their stipend from one twenty-five to three hundred. So, uh, that must be brought forth in a public hearing, which we will bring forth uh, in a public hearing, uh, so that you guys can have the option, opportunity to, uh, discuss it and voice your concerns or uh, approval of it. And then we will move forward with a, a vote on the, the, um, the resolution. So just want to give uh, the council heads up that that is coming and be transparent with the, the citizens that that was previously discussed with the, um, the previous, uh, council and we're just taking it up on this council because it was never voted on and approved. Uh, so just want to make sure that we close that, that loose end. And now we could just, uh, jump into the budget. Um, Mr., Mr. Stewart, um, I would like for you to, um, to be transparent with our, um, without citizens, just can you discuss, just to give that, um, high level overview of the budget and the changes that were made from, uh, uh, any amendments that were made that were presented in this budget? And then we can open it up for the, uh, council members to, and we could go item by item. I think on our agenda we have, uh, sorry, we'll start with administration. We'll have administration, legal, cable, legislative office, finances, executive office and general operations. Um, so if you could uh, go through any changes that were made to those sections that are part of the, uh, agenda, that, that would be great for us.
Okay, good evening, um.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes. If you could go section by section, administration, and then we can have discussion amongst the council. If anyone has any questions, then they can question you on it. And then once we're done with administration, then we can move to legal, cable, legislation and we can go in that order. Sounds good?
Sounds, sounds perfect.
Okay, let's start with administration.
So in administration, we didn't do a whole lot of changes. There is, um, increase in, um, salaries. Um, there will be, and, and, and maybe I should leave this for President, um, Council President Curtis to discuss. It's about the board election expense that will be added to the, um, the budget for twenty twenty-two because of the special election, election. Um, so I could confirm that all adjustments that were brought to the the city manager's attention was adjusted from the budget from May. Any other adjustments that may have come about was not included in the budget. We are waiting until we get full information from the council before we go ahead and make certain changes. So administration, um, we don't have that much change. Um, I added in the American Rescue Plan Fund, um, because we are applying for that money. We want to help and make sure that our citizens have the benefit of this fund. Um, going forward from administration, we move into the executive. Yes, there is an increase in the executive, um, in, in the mayor's salary. And as I said, we did not do that much changes between, um, the last budget and this budget for majority of the, um, the, the, the expenses and programs that we run. For, for legal, there wasn't that much changes. Um, the cable department, we are considering, um, some upgrades of, um, equipment. Um, we're looking at twenty-five thousand dollars increase. Um, the legislation office, um, we are looking at, and I think this must have been discussed in prior meetings, um, a new deputy clerk position which is going to increase the budget to twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, and additional, additional funds for computer and laptop, and this is for the legislative office. Finance, there is not much change as well apart from, um, I was discussing with, um, President Council Curtis about the new treasurer that you'll be having. The benefits will reduce because, um, there's a vesting period for employees to get, um, the, the, the retirement benefit and that person who will be coming in will not be eligible. You'll have a, I think it's a three-year, um, vesting period in order. So we managed to save six thousand dollars from the finance, um, department. The executive department, as I said, there will be, um, compensation increases from six thousand to eight thousand four hundred dollars. Um, and, uh, let me see. And general operation, we are not seeing a whole lot of increase in general operation. Um, there will be some software, um, software increases because we are considering the accounting system that we're using. And, um, we want to make sure that it will provide the proper information that we need, um, to proper, to properly advise our managers and our citizens as well. And, um, that's it for now because we're looking at those areas, but we don't have much changes in the budget apart from those.
What, one of the changes that was discussed, uh, was the, um, was the APA funds. Could you explain, explain that for our citizens, what that is?
Okay, so the APA fund, that is the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, which was passed recently by the, um, by the president. It, what it looks at is how they could assist citizens with regard to those who were affected by the coronavirus. They provided us with, um, seventy-five percent of, uh, they are going to provide us with seventy-five percent of the budget that was in effect due in December twenty-seven, twenty twenty. Um, we will get the amount in two trenches, fifty percent in July and the remaining fifty percent July next year, July twenty twenty-two. So in the budget, I only account for that fifty percent of the seventy-five percent of our operating budget for last year. And this is the amount that you see for one million six ninety-six thousand. Now that amount, we do need to have programs to total and liquidate that amount of money. So I'm looking forward, I'm looking to the council to come up with ideas, um, as to how that fund will be, um, will be used up.
And, and for our citizens' information, that those funds are, um, are in the budget. You can look on page six of the budget document, uh, is one million six hundred ninety-six thousand, two hundred thirty-three thousand dollars as revenue and you will have the corresponding expense in the same year. Um, and, uh, the way it, the way it works is that they'll give us the funds and we will have to make a plan on how to spend it, uh, but for right now, uh, we wanted to account for. Um, and it, it's, it's here to help our ci- our city. Uh, there is some guidance on how we can actually spend it. Uh, we're, we're going to wait, uh, a little bit longer so for, for more concrete guidance on how we can use it right now. Um, uh, we could use it for, uh, what I saw, we could use it for sell things like essential workers, um, limited things as it relates to infrastructure. Uh, but more guidance on that is coming out. So just wanted the citizens to be aware of that, uh, and we will love your input. Uh, uh, I, I encourage you guys to go out there and research it, uh, so you can know for yourselves, uh, what it is, what it pertains to and what we can use for it. And we're open as a council to hear your thoughts on how it can be spent, uh, based on the, uh, approved, um, guidance on what we can spend it on. So we'll definitely have a in our special working session, our it's not open to the pub for public comment, but we will be bringing it forth. You will have an opportunity to speak on it in a regular meeting where where we will have a section two, so you can voice your your opinion. Any other council members have any questions as relates to the budget? I know initially we said we're gonna go section by section, Mr. Stewart, went all the way through for changes. But I I want to open the floor for council members' comments. And let's start, let's, if we would like, can we start with each section? So can we start with administration? Have all our questions and administration answered and then go on to the next session, so we don't have to go all the way back and forth. Councilman Fareed?
Yes, um, before we get there, on the the letter that gives the summary of the revenues and the expenditures, the presentation of the numbers is still off. So, and I can send this to you, Mr. Stewart. But the local property, and so what I'm looking at, citizens, is that is this first page dated June twenty-four, and it gives you the breakdown. And 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 just so you know, the difference in this page from the budget back in May is just that one point six million is from the ARPA money, so that's this line, it says local property and income taxes of billion, that's actually not local property and income tax. Is that six hundred thousand dollar line?
So the Councilwoman Fareed, you're going in and out. I don't know for everybody else, but you're cutting in and out.
Am I cutting in and out for everybody else?
You're good right now.
Yes.
Okay. So this first line, the two point nine million, that's only representative of the real and personal property taxes. A line for six hundred thousand dollars, it says intergovernmental and service, that's actually the income tax. Line for fines, fees, license, is actually licenses, permits, admissions tax, hotel tax, county even interest. The interfund transfer line is interfund transfer plus intergovernmental plus service fee. This miscellaneous was fine. Then on the expenditures, the legislation and mayor, it shows two five two four nine five, but it's actually four nine six, if you look at supporting detail. And with that adjustment, the budget surplus of capital funding should actually be thirty-nine, six forty-one, six forty-two. But I will send you this is important for this to be so that when citizens are looking at the different line items, they know exactly what supporting schedules to go to.
Yes, we'll do.
Miss, Miss Jones, could you please mute the iPhone, this Joyce? And I think Mr. Herron just muted himself, so I think that's where most of the noise is coming from.
Sorry about that.
No, no worries. Thank you. Any other questions? Concerns?
Um, yes, I do have questions, but I do have the have the salary numbers in administration been verified, because I'm getting a different number than what is on this budget. So I mean, my my thing is this, with the whole budget, all I'm asking for, I would like to get a bridge from five eighteen to now, to the budget that we're working on today. That's what I would like to get of all the changes.
Mister Stewart, could you provide that?
I couldn't pro- I couldn't provide that right now. That is something I'll have to go back and present. What had happened is the previous city manager got that information and made the changes. I don't have those numbers with me now, but I'll make sure that I have it ready for the next work session.
Okay, if you need the five eighteen budget, let me know and I'll send it to you.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think we can actually go through it in administration. The only line item that is different from the budget from May eighteenth in the personnel expenditures is the social security and Medicare tax. Every other line item is the same. May eighteenth, it was twenty thousand seven oh seven and today is twenty-four eight oh five. I think that that was just an incorrect calculation on it, because it's still at seven point six five percent.
Exactly. Think what had happened here is that there were some there was a formula error that had taken up some numbers from a different column, so that was corrected. So these numbers should be seven percent of salaries. Thanks, thank you.
Councilman Herron, was there any other changes that you would like to point out for administration?
I can say, if he does the bridge, he will see a number to changes, but let me just go through the salary. Just look at the salary for administration. Look at the salary and benefits for public safety, code enforcement, public works. See if those tie, because I'm getting different numbers in which I, what what is in that budget, what was in that budget from?
Well, the salary, the salary for administration is the difference is explained by what we just said, it was a, it was a it was a current of formula, and that was actually pointed out when the budget was presented on the eighteen. So that's been corrected, so that's where, if you look in the personal expenditures, it's page fourteen from the May eighteenth budget. And it is same page in the twen- in the one that was presented on June twenty-fifth. Again, the line item is the social security and Medicare tax. It was explicitly presented as twenty thousand seven oh seven, but that was an incorrect amount. When the formula was corrected, it is now twenty-four thousand eight hundred and five. So that's about a forty-one hundred dollar difference that you should be seeing in the administration salaries from May eighteen to today.
I'm sorry, Councilman Jones, are you finished? All right, uh, the Mister Stewart, the only other question or comment that I had as it relates to the administration budget is that I see that the election board is, you have, for FY twenty-two is is zero, and I know we're operating on a continuing resolution. So I believe we will need to fund that since the election is carried over to FY twenty-two at the at the forty-three thousand dollars that we have approved in emergency ordinance.
Noted, noted.
And and the other, I'm sorry, go ahead, who was that, Councilman Fareed?
I did actually have a question on the social security and Medicare tax line. It says that that's for five employees, but there are six employees above. Is that, is one of them not having social security Medicare tax? Taken out, or should that be adjusted to six? And then this actually increases from the twenty-four eight oh five.
Based on the numbers that I'm looking at and the calculation that I have, all the employees are picked up in this amount, the twenty-four eight oh five. Yes.
Okay, so then maybe we just need to change it so that the number next to the at seven point six five percent, it should say six there instead of five.
Oh, exactly.
And then where it says the retirement contribution for the city manager is at five percent through fiscal year fifteen. I wasn't sure what sure what that meant.
That may be an error carryover from previous budget, so thanks for that.
And then the retirement contribution for others, I think that should be five and not four.
Exactly.
Okay, and can you just make sure that when you increase those numbers, that it doesn't need to be reflected in the amount? That twenty-four eight oh five will still remain twenty-four eight oh five.
Certainly, they will remain the same. Thank you very much.
H- historically, has there been explanation and a a change in a budget that's over like ten percent or a certain amount? So for example, I see that there's a fifteen percent decrease in professional engineering services. Yeah, fifteen thousand dollar decrease and then ten thousand dollar increase in professional service and lobbyists. Is there explanation for those?
If I might add on, that I think that's an important one, because the budget that was presented on May eighteenth actually said sixty thousand for professional engineering, and our year-to-date spend as of the last treasurer's report was only about twenty thousand. So although it's less than what was previously presented, it's still more than double what's been spent, and I'm not sure if there's anything that's anticipated that's making this be, you know, going up to forty-five over what we spent this year.
I think what the plan was, they had had in the budget for last year to install a, I think it was an elevator in the building. I think that has something to do with it. I think it had to do with the feasibility study. So I think that added to the the balances. Although there was a reduction, the reduction is as a result of COVID last year. They had planned for sixty thousand. This year, they brought it down to forty-five thousand dollars.
Well, can you just look into that and, you know, in our next meeting, and you can provide us and the citizens with you know, assurance that that is what it was?
Yes, definitely will do.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Herron?
Mister Stewart, what is your email address?
Is destewart at cityofglennarden.org.
I got it. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions as it relates to administration for Mister Stewart? Councilman Fareed? And and Council, not Council, Mister Stewart. And we realize that you just got here, so we don't want you to, you know, we we don't expect immediate answers, and if you know them, you can say them, but but all we ask is that you look into them and then in our next meeting, you can provide us and the citizens with an accurate explanation of the questions that were answered.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yes, I'm just gonna ask my questions for the benefit of the citizens. So the office supplies, it looks like we're not budgeting enough based off of what we actually have. If we should actually be increasing that amount. And then HR supplies, why that's separated from office supply? And I think this question was asked last year, I know you weren't here, Mister Stewart, around communication. The wireless, is there a plan or is this each employee in the administration getting their own phone with their own plan right here, like a plan where we could potentially be saving some money because the line item in every area?
Yes, and and that is another question that I'll have to look into and advise you further on it.
And I'm wondering for the temp employment, is this enough given the vacancies that we currently have? I'm not sure if that's enough. And there, you already covered the election, sorry. You've already covered the election board item.
Yes.
And then, if you could, just typically what goes this, this general expense? Maybe some examples of what I know it's a small amount, but and that will conclude my questions on the
All right, thank you, and I'll look into that as well, although it says discretionary. I look into that further for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is a simple question. I know you have the vehicle fuel expense. If you, what what vehicles are we fueling? If you don't know, you can look into it and get back to us.
Definitely, I I could look into it and get back to you.
Councilman Jones?
I think with the vehicle of fuel expense, what they get, getting that feel from the previous city manager, he wanted to get a car for like the administr- well, for the administration or whoever, like if the council clerk needed to go to the post office or if the the, when the finance clerk needs to take deposits to the bank, they were trying to get a car so that for that that purpose, and I think that's where the fuel expenses came in at. Also with the lobbyists, I think they were, they had, the city had lobbyists and the prior city manager, when he looked into that, he, they had exhausted all of the money in the line item, and then he was trying to figure out what it was that they what services they performed for the city to be paid two thousand dollars a month. And once that line item was exhausted, he was still doing the research to find out wh- why the city would need a lobbyist. Or what uses that we would have for it, so that's why that may have gotten decreased.
So we purchased a vehicle for administrative staff to go places?
They they want to purchase a vehicle in this budget, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, I I in the capital budget, there is a request to or a plan to have a vehicle for administrative use.
Uh, Mister President?
Councilman Herron?
Yeah, the vehicle, the vehicle fuel expenses, the fuel that we get that we purchase from Gasboy, we contract with the with Prince George's County to get gas for our vehicles, for all our vehicles, police, public works and everything else. That's what the vehicle fuel expense is. Each department that have a vehicle should have a vehi- vehicle expense line in it. So you'll see that in administration for the administrative car, for co-deforment. You'll see it in police for their vehicles and and the bus and all of that other stuff, so that's what your vehicle expense is.
Thank you, Councilman Herron. Any other questions before we move on to legal? Okay. Legal. So. The only question I had here was. Do we have a contract without city attorney and?
Yes.
An existing contract? Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I also had a question. Does this amount? Does this include even needing to be defended against lawsuits or should we have additional money in that? Because that contract include that? I know it says court appearances, but. I think a lawsuit would be a little more involved. I don't know if that would be additional money on top of the contract.
That, Mr. President, may I?
Yes.
That that money involves lawsuits and any type of legal representation we need. If it in, but if it's something else, we also cover it under legit, the local government insurance trust. Which also provide legal representation if we get into a lawsuit, if it's filed under their, under their purview, so.
It's possible that like we could go over that amount and we would need to get more money?
We never had, we've never gone over the sixty thousand.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Stewart, I assume that the legal contract is.
It's current, it's current and in good standing. We recently paid the. The retain a fee for the next year, so that has been paid this year.
And it's stored in a finance office?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Alright, any other questions as relates to legal?
So we're gonna stay at sixty thousand for legal? We'll be staying at sixty thousand for legal.
I think we should.
Okay.
Yes.
Cable Department? I know that there are increases in here. From last year, for example, twenty five thousand dollars. For support equipment, but maybe you could talk a little bit on that. I believe that we needed new equipment to fix our cable. Equipment so that we can start to broadcast our meetings back on cable, correct?
Exactly, and that is the plan. The idea is to revamp the the cable. Department. I believe that the previous city manager had an idea that would increase. And improve the services from that department, so hence we have. Increases in support equipment. Studer equipment. And in technical assistance. So the idea is to really be able to. Put out more content from the cable department.
And is there? Have we, is there estimated timeline that the administration would like to to have those upgrades made? If you don't know, that's fine, we can, I think the. The mayor was supposed to be on, but I don't see him on.
Yes, and and, yes, so for that, I would defer to the mayor.
Okay.
Yes.
Councilman Farid, did you have something?
Yes, I wanted to know, Mrs. Stewart, do you know if the upgrades in equipment would also take care of? Being able to better support virtual meetings? So like Zoom meetings or if we want, we want to do hybrid meetings? Or do you think we should add some money in there for that type of technology?
I believe the support equipment is considering that kind of improvement.
Okay. So the twenty five thousand?
So the twenty five thousand should be able to set up. For that kind of broadcast.
Okay.
Would you mind just double checking that for me? Cause I went to the council chambers and even where we. Where we sit, there aren't even plugs to plug in like computers. So when you sit down, you have to have like hard paper, like so right now I have like three screens up, so. It'll be easier if, I mean, if if that were the case. Then I would expect that some revisions will be made to that as well, because how will we be able to do cable and Zoom? If there weren't equipment there to broadcast via Zoom. So if you could just double check that to make sure that's in there, it's good that we get the cable back, but. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't see any type of outlets or anything in the council chambers.
Okay, will do, will do.
Okay. Any other questions? From council? For cable? No? Alright, we can move on to legislative.
I have a question for Legislative Council President.
Yes, Councilwoman Delma.
Sure, I'm sure if we're all looking at the screen, we can see that there's eighty percent increase. I believe it's saying that on the conference and training line item, it's it's doubled, well. I understand it was COVID last year, it's now fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty proposed. For fiscal year twenty twenty two, and I am a proponent, I want to be clear on conference and training. But I wanted to know, how did, in regards to that number, did we take COVID into, well, we're still coming out of COVID into consideration? As far as increasing that number? Is there, do we know the story behind that number? Is it gonna be more conferences and training or? Why is it more than fiscal year twenty even? I'm going that, yeah.
And and that too, I'll have to look into, but I think it has to do. With the number of council members, if you notice, they are setting a budget of two thousand dollars per. Council member, and I figure that's where the fourteen thousand came about.
So I I have a question here too, because if it's budgeting two thousand dollars for each council member. For four different conferences, or is that five conferences? I don't know that two thousand dollars will be.
It's adequate.
For registration, lodging, transportation. Five conferences. I know we've already missed the M and L summer, so four conferences potentially.
And so I believe you are asking to have this increase because it would be more reasonable.
Well, not necessarily for it to be increased, but just more kind of understanding is it. Around the expectation of us attending these conferences, like if we are. Expected to attend these conferences, which I'm totally fine with, then I would say that's not enough. Or if you want to set, if we're expected to attend these virtually, if they're offered virtually, you know, is that the?
Ms. Ferguson, I know you had your hand up, did you wanna touch on that? Cause I know I talked to you before and you you talked about. Historically, what that line item has been.
Yes, prior to COVID. Uh, we had five thousand dollars per council member. Thirty five thousand for the the training and the listing of the. Various conferences, but they're still there, but we did reduce it because COVID, we wasn't using it. It just kind of went down in between nineteen, twenty, twenty one, but. Just going to MML Ocean City some summer. I don't know, I mean, the hotel can be seven, seven to eight hundred dollars. Doesn't even have anything to do with the conference. The cost of the conference, the, for them. And the, which is the travel and and food, so. I mean, it can be like twelve hundred, thirteen hundred dollars just for that one, and then you have the MML. But I I personally think that you go back up to where it was, or at least three, four, five thousand dollars and more so because. We have. You know, new members and the and the training is is very valid for them. Well, even for myself, cause I, that was myself knew too, but I I think that. Since we're out of the COVID, we go back to where we originally was in eighteen. To five thousand per member, which would be total thirty five thousand dollars. That's my opinion.
So, and and for our citizens who are who are listening, you know. I believe the training is important, especially for newcomers. We have four newcomers. On the board, on the board, on a council this year. And just like any other training with your job, it's always good to go to, in in my opinion, to go to to train to see. What other people are doing to to sharpen your skills and your knowledge against other people so that we can bring what we learned there back to our city. So I do think that it, there is value in adding money to the conference and training. Because there are a lot of progressive cities out there, they're doing spectacular things and. I think we could go there, go to some of these trainings and learn from them and bring it back here. So I just don't want you guys to think that we just want to increase it. But the all, the increase leads back to value for our our city and value for our citizens, so just wanted to add that piece. Any other questions?
So that'll be a change for the treasurer to put the thirty five thousand in?
Yes.
Okay.
And and balancing, right? You know, we just don't want to just add money to the budget. We're gonna rely on Mr. Stewart to to see if we can balance the budget, because if we don't have thirty five thousand dollars. Then we're not gonna do it. However, just one caution, because we do have a, we are sitting on a lot of funds. Yeah, the city has done well, the city is prosperous, and so we just have to be strategic. Which is one of the things we want to put together this year, is to have a strategic plan. Based it off, you know, plans from the past to see how we can propel the city of going out and forward. And the cost associated with doing that, to getting us up to speed where we should be in the city, so. Of course, Mr. Stewart, you could add it in there, but we expect you with your experience to, you know, see how you can balance that.
Will do, will do.
Council President, can I ask a quick question? This is just the, I'm trying to know type of thing. When it comes to the clerk to the council, or maybe this is to Mr. Stewart as well, maybe. When it comes to the clerk to the council, are they under legislative, under legislative or are they under administration? What what we? What would we consider them?
That would be under legislation because the the council clerk serves at the pleasure of the council. And then I believe the deputy clerk position was approved last year, I want to say, of this Councilman Ferguson. Councilman Herring and Councilman Jones can speak more to that. But both of those positions would be in legislative because both of those would enter to the council.
Okay, I'm, and the reason why I asked is because I see. Under temporary staffing, there's still a zero line item, and I don't know if we would consider the interim. Clerk to the council temporary or not, so I don't know if that line item should, again, I'm just asking. I don't know if it should still stay blank. I'm optimistic that we won't need temporary staffing. Going forward, but not sure about that particular line item staying blank.
Yeah, I see that. Five thousand.
Okay, I'm looking at the, maybe I'm, so I'm looking at the.
It's on the professional services.
It's under professional services, so not under temporary staffing, correct?
Temporary employee.
Cause what I'm looking at, when I look at professional services, I see thirteen thousand. For fiscal year twenty twenty two proposed budget.
So I'm looking at, on on the proposed budget document, I'm on page twenty one. Legislative office.
Gotcha, I'm on page seven.
Oh, okay.
That's a, a difference. And I don't know if this is a personnel matter and it needs to be taken off the claim, but I I believe, I believe Miss Wolf is. She's the interim, she's the deputy clerk acting as the council clerk, she's part time. She was hired, I think, for part. I don't know if she's a temporary staffer, she's a salary employee.
I'm fine with us discussing it offline. I just wanted to, I just needed some clarity around, you know, whether they fit and then I, when I was looking at page seven. While I don't know what other, you know, Council President, you were looking at a future page that I'm gonna get to. I just saw this blank line item, so that's why.
Yeah, on on page seven, the professional service is thirteen thousand dollars. That's the, page seven, I believe is summary page and page twenty one is the detail of that page. So in that breakdown of thirteen thousand dollars of professional services, you have consulting services, temp employees for five thousand. A parliamentarian to attend public meetings, six thousand, and marquee maintenance, a two thousand.
Gotcha.
Mr. Stewart, for the retirement plan, do we only pay retirement for the council clerk and not the deputy clerk?
In this instance, the retirement, as I said before. You have to be vested in order to receive that. This is going to be a new position, it would not be earning retirement. As it has to go through the vesting process.
But wouldn't there still be contributions in the vesting period?
If we're expensing anything, it's gonna be the, our contribution, not the individual's contribution. So if we have someone who come in and wish to join the the retirement fund. They will pay that from their salaries and not from our expenses.
Okay, so you're saying that the city doesn't even start to contribute until they are vested?
Until they are vested, yes.
Different, okay.
Mr. President.
Councilman Harry.
Just a follow up on that, but I thought we were looking into a new retirement plan, and I think the state's retirement plan is thirty days. So if we're looking into a new retirement plan, shouldn't we budget for that in case we do get into a new retirement plan? Under Mutual of America is is three years, but under the State of Maryland, I think it's thirty days.
Now, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're we're getting vested. Mixed up with what our policy and procedures are. On contributions made to employees, because those are two different things. You can, the the, you know, contributions can be made to an individual and they're not vested until they have served. A certain amount of time in their place of employment. That doesn't preclude the the employer from making contributions. However. Um, however, there are, for example, uh, organizations that says, oh, you're new. Or you have to, it, it is the policy of the employer to say, okay, you're a new employee. Um, we have this retirement plan, but new employees aren't eligible to have employer contributions until they've served a year, uh, just so people can come in, collect money from the organization and leave. So those are two different things.
That's what, that's what my understanding is. That's why I'm asking, like, are we sure that we don't make contributions until they vest? Because typically, the contributions start sooner than that. The vesting is just a matter of, are you entitled to actually collect benefits?
That's what I'm, that's my understanding also. I, I thought that, you know, we, we contribute no matter what. No matter what, we contribute to the retirement plan. So he needs to put that retirement money back in for whatever he put it out for, for three years. Because that money does need to be put into the account for every employee. It's about two point five percent or something like that.
And then also, if it's for both deputy clerk and the council clerk, it should be for two.
And I know I'm jumping ahead on this, but are the police officers included in that?
Yes.
So the city contributes dollars to the retirement of police officers?
Yes.
I think, um, President Curtis, is that in the public safety section?
Yes. Okay, so going forward, I will look into that. I will work with, um, HR to ensure that we have the correct, um, policy to follow through, to include those amounts as you, um, as you refer to. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Any other questions from Mr. Stewart for legislative? Uh, one more, um, small thing for computers and laptops. Um, well, I guess now two questions, uh, is three thousand dollars enough? Uh, and my second, uh, comment is that it needs to be brought over to the, the FY twenty-two, uh, FY twenty-one change, because it's not in that column. Where the difference is? Do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, definitely.
Yeah.
And so, yes.
Uh, and do you think three thousand dollars? Well, I don't have historical data for that, but. Okay.
Council president, not that you're asking me per se, but I think three thousand dollars is enough. That's, that's me though. If I think about seven council people, not that seven council people will need it, I know I don't, um.
Yeah.
Times four, you know, that's more than enough.
I actually don't think that it's enough. Um, I think it depends on who, how many people are going to get one, whether or not it's enough. But, um, if you take that three thousand and divide it by seven, that's not enough. If, you know, for, um, a device, the accessories that need to go with it, whatever support, um, is needed. You know, like if you needed a monitor, you know, things to be able to kind of manage the zoom call that we're doing, I don't think three thousand is enough for all seven components. Maybe if it's just for the new ones, maybe that would be. I don't think.
Uh, Councilman Jones?
Also, the, um, computer, um, system on the, uh, council clerk's desk, the one in the council, co, conference room in the council, uh, office has been upgraded. The one in the, uh, for the council clerk's office, that one needs to be upgraded. So, um, and we also found out that the, uh, laptop that the council clerk was using is, uh, not working for some reason. So that may need, the council clerk, whoever the council clerk is, may need an upgrade for her desktop and she may need a laptop.
Okay.
So, um, do we want to take that, fright, that total up? Or leave it until we get an accurate, um, assessment of what it is we're gonna need?
And I would ask just that we look at, um, you know, similar to like a lot of companies when you go and they give you one, you don't buy your own or, you know, they don't really buy you one individually. It might save the city money if there's, um, an enterprise-wide, um, laptop purchase. And that was, and whenever anyone leaves, we take it back and can distribute it to the next person. I don't know if that's possible.
Also, there were two monitors, two brand-new mon, two brand-new Dell monitors that were, uh, found in, um, cleaning up. So, uh, that one of those Dell monitors can certainly be used in, for the council clerk's, uh, desktop with some HDMI cords. Uh, the next time T-spec comes by. But, um, I think the, uh, the little, uh, the box itself, that needs to come out and, and a new one, like this little small HP controller. It could be changed to that, like the one that's in the council, on the desk for the, uh, secretary, I mean, the desk in the, um, council conference room. So. But there are two monitors, two brand-new monitors that have not been used.
So Councilwoman Farid, what you had suggested about, um, having a central purchasing, um, computer, you know, equipment, yes. We try to stick to using T-spec to, um, put any of our computers into effect. That way, when then, whenever anyone is leaving, they can leave those computers back, especially laptops. So that is how we are trying to make it as strict as possible so that we have control and they are a part of our inventory of, of, uh, of assets.
And does that control also the type of device that a person gets? Because I know, you know, that I sent you yesterday about a device. But I don't, like, at my job, they, I didn't get to say, I want this kind of device.
I understand. Um, we, we try to give, um, our, our users the best, um, equipment available at that time. Yes.
Any other questions, uh, as relates to the legislative budget?
So will we go to, uh, increase the pot, uh, for the computers or just leave it as is until we do an assessment?
Uh, I think we leave as is until we do an assessment of our current equipment and then we can, um, get a better idea of what that price would be.
Okay.
I think that's the best way for it.
Because I think it's still two laptops too that are not being, uh, used. I think, uh, Mrs. Schultz is on here. She, Mrs. Schultz, do you still have, uh, a couple of laptops in your, um, office?
Good evening. I have the city manager's laptop. I was left the laptop. However, uh, it was cleaned off when, when the president and vice president previously changed. And so when they cleaned it off, they didn't put Microsoft back on. So, um, if you, that's basically available if they put the software back on it. So technically, yes, I do have two. I have one with no software and I have the former city manager's laptop. They'll be available when, when they replace him.
And weren't there two other laptops in the city manager's office that we got out of the treasurer's office?
Think those two are still in there. They were not given to me, I can double check. I'm not sure how old they were, uh, or the condition that they were left in. But I do remember at least one, maybe two, and I will check tomorrow and get back with, excuse me, get with, uh, Mr. Stewart to, um, to let him know what the equipment is and then have T-spec check them out.
We have inventory of all of our assets, correct?
Um, we're supposed to, sir. Um, I, uh, T-spec for the most, uh, T-spec for the most part should have an inventory of everything they have given us. Because since I have been with the city and since June of nineteen, that's the only, um, uh, service we have used to purchase, uh, upgrade, get rid of. So they should have an ongoing, um, inventory of everything. And if you want, I can check with them tomorrow to see if they can send us a copy of the inventory.
Yeah, that'd be great, because it, we'll have a copy of all the computers that we have in the government. We'll have a, in that should be how old that piece of equipment is, uh, to be able to determine if it's really obsolete and we need to purchase new ones or not. Um, it, it should, just for them, it should just be a, a, a schedule with all that on there, similar to a depreciation schedule, so.
Exactly.
I'll check with them tomorrow, working with Mr. Stewart. And, um, we'll look at those two laptops that, um, that they got out of, um, Mr., uh, uh, out of Mr. Stewart's, oh, uh, current office.
And so we buy these, this equipment from T-spec. We don't lease them, right? So when we purchase them, it's ours and we never give it back.
It is my understanding, we purchase the equipment. The problem we have been running into is licenses. It's almost as if they won't purchase a license until you get a body. So, you know, we always have to upgrade license or, in your case, when the council changed, we had to flip license for those that we could. Um, so I know the equipment we purchased, the licenses we get on an as needed basis. And I think it's by the, and we, and the license yearly.
Okay. All right, yeah, that piece of information would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, let, before move on? Finance. Any questions, George, to finance?
I mean, I think we just have the, the same item with the retirement benefits that we talked about. Mr. Stewart, making sure that.
Yes. And, and not only that, um, I was saying, as I said earlier, that with a new treasurer, there's got to be some savings in the retirement section. But as we spoke off with, um, um, Councilman Herring, um, we need to look a little deeper into the policy to ensure that, uh, vesting period. Okay?
I had a couple of questions.
Council president, it's Schultz or Hannah?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm ahead to the computers. Um, we pay, we, the city pays the two point five percent after the employee has been on board for three months. Once they're on board for three months, then the beginning of that fourth month, then we go ahead on it. We pay the two point five percent. Um, and he's, he's corrected, you're not vested until three years. Um, we pay the life insurance of the employees within thirty days, if I'm not mistaken. I'll have to double check that. But the city pays in full the life insurance. Um, uh, we pay the two point five. And if the employee wishes additional retirement monies, they have a four fifty-seven K. I think that's the number that they can, um, contribute themselves. I will work with Mr. Stewart, um, one-on-one with that, uh, tomorrow to confirm the, the timeframe.
Great.
Couple of questions. Um, one, I don't know if you've done that, but this has been a thorn in my side. The tax for, um, the tax for life insurance, um, the federal government says if, if I as an employer give you, Ms. Schultz, five hundred thousand dollars with the life insurance, uh, it's a benefit to you and you get taxed on it. Has that hit the us yet as a city?
Uh, that's a funny ass question, sir.
I'm sorry.
Thanks for bringing that to my attention. I will look into that as well.
Yeah.
Life insurance.
Um, and my second question, uh, was, uh, how is the two point five percent? How is it, how does it fare against other municipalities? Is that, um, I'm sorry, can't hear you.
Very low. Uh, most municipalities that I know of, but I have contacted and worked with basically are under State of Maryland, to be totally honest with you. I don't know how many are under Mutual of America, but the majority that I know of, and I could be incorrect and maybe Mr. Herring, or we can do some research by calling around. But the, the, the ones that I know of are out of, um, uh, uh, New, uh, State of Maryland retirement system.
Okay, and, uh, Councilwoman Jones, uh, Councilman Ferguson and Councilman Harry, I, I vaguely remember of us wanting to do a study to see if we should move to Maryland. Has that been discussed previously or?
That was a discussion with Mr. Bratton, uh, that, uh, when they were going to go to the State of Maryland. I think it was like a ten thousand dollar fee.
When, may I interject, um, back pre-COVID into, uh, March of twenty twenty, I gave, uh, council information on Mutual of America and Mr. Bratton did the research on State of Maryland retirement system. I'm like, there was an initial fee for them to come in and assess how much it would cost. Um, and this, the fee was considerable. And I think if anything, that may or may not have been the holdup. Uh, we didn't get, but so far on that project because COVID hit the next month. Um, I'll go back and see if I can find any notes and Mr. Bratton may or may not have left me. And I'll share that with, um, uh, Mr. Stewart and the president and vice president. He may, I may not have any, but I'll check to see what, what I have, if anything.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a follow-up question actually to you, Ms. Schultz, similar to what Derek asked. Because in looking at the salary of, you know, the administration, the council clerk, they seem pretty low. How, are we competitive?
Um, it depends on what, it depends on what municipality you compare it to. Um, the larger municipalities, of course, Greenbelt, Bowie, Highsville is pretty big. There, there are more. At one point, um, the two previous city managers prior, um, was going to get an assessment done to see, um, where we fell on the pay scale in comparison to other municipalities. Um, that didn't make it done.
Okay.
Um, again, uh, COVID's just stopped everything in, in a nutshell. But we are low in comparison, but I think we may, but, uh, if you compare us to the bigger municipalities and, um, I'll just use Greenbelt where the former city manager went to. We could not meet, meet, meet his salary whatsoever.
Right.
But no, it is what it is for the size of the, um, the city, I, I, I would assume.
Well, I wonder if, I don't know, if maybe that's something we should move forward with is doing an assessment because if we want to retain quality individuals, I think we need to pay them competitively. Um, I, I'm not, you know, I, I think these are pretty low, but I'm mostly from corporate. I don't know if this is, if this is, you know, um, typical for government, but I, I, I think that some of these folks could, uh, stand a way, especially from.
Okay, I, I will work with Mr. Stewart to see if we can find someone to, to do a feasibility assessment and come, and assess our salaries, compare our salaries to light-size municipalities. We cannot, we cannot, it would be unfair to the city, in my opinion, to compare us to a green belt.
Right, and that's fair. And when you say like size, are you talking about the number of residents? Or are you talking about like the operating bulk?
Um, basically residents. I'm looking at, you know, the size residents, um, compared to, yeah, we can't, we could never meet Greenbelt's residents. We could never meet Bowie right now.
Right, but I think there's more to comparability than the number of citizens. Right, but I think there's more to comparability than the number of citizens. It also depends on kind of what, you know, what what our costs are, what our revenues are.
Okay, well, maybe if you don't mind, um Councilwoman Free, I will work with you as well. Um and to 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 ensure that I'm requesting what you feel we is is necessary to do a a fair. Assessment of the salaries. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, I did have one question for finance. Now, in the in the in the twenty twenty two budget, uh Mr. Stewart. You are including a a software change for the finance office, correct?
Yes, we are considering that. I am still in a review process of um. Looking at the system we have and um see how well it's serving us. And also to look at other systems such as Great Plains Dynamics and so on, which are more. Um web based than um than what we have, but that's. One of the areas we're looking at to increase and improve our. Accounting system.
So what line item do you have monies to for that to be done?
It would be accounting software, I mean.
Maintenance.
Yes.
Okay, it's only seven thousand dollars in there.
Yeah.
That too, I have to come back to you on that as well.
Yeah, I'm in the middle of an implementation right now and. I don't know if anything that costs seven thousand dollars. Um but there are some good clout based accounting systems out there. That should over time be hopefully significantly cheaper than. Software, but that's something that you could look into and get back to us on.
Uh that is one I'm looking into, yes.
I'm sorry, Councilman Jones, I didn't mean to interrupt you, were you finished?
No, that's fine, yeah, I'm finished. That's, just wanted to make sure that that is one of the items that that we address this budget.
Uh and I had a couple more questions as relates to um our auditors. Are we going into RFP for new auditors and is it an FY twenty two?
I I think the auditors that we have now are what I get to understand, five years if um. Ms. Jones could um.
I think they're at five years, even though she sent a a a letter to uh see if we wanted to. But I think we need to um send an RFP out for new auditors to see what's out there, see who answers.
Yes, but still do remember that the rotation can happen within. An audit firm based on their different partners, so that too we should take into consideration. If we're looking at the the period of coverage, but yes, we need to look at um what's out there. And um how, you know, efficient and effective those auditors are and cost benefit too.
And and for all of our citizens who are listening, um there's a thing that auditors go through, so. Uh auditor is supposed to be independent of a business that they audit. Um and, you know, it's inevitable that after a a a period of time. And working with somebody, a relationship will be built, uh and then that can cause that independence to be. Kind of shaky, if you will, and so it's it's required by um uh. You know, auditing standards that those orders be moved out for new fresh bodies. Uh that can maintain the independence of audits so that transparent and accurate data could be presented to. Um the end user, which would be you, so just a little bit of context on that. I'm sorry, Ms. Jones, I'm a Councilwoman Jones, she was saying something.
I had one other question concerning the auditors now, because we don't have a city manager in place right now to uh. Put out the RFP, will the uh Mr. Stewart be uh the person doing that at this time?
I think we have some time because I think their five years is with FY twenty one, so they will audit FY twenty one.
Okay.
Uh uh the special election is in July, on July twenty six, so um the the. Incoming mayor and can, you know, hire his or her uh city manager. And then they can discuss that as long as that person, that auditor is in place in a timely fashion from that thing, I think we have some time.
Okay.
And one last thing was. Uh I know Robert Half, I saw in the the.
Temporary.
Professional, professional services, contractual consulting services, only see three thousand dollars. Um I know Robert Half is pretty expensive, so uh you may want to look into that line and update that based off of past invoices. Uh we at least know that we have another month before our mayor is elected. Uh and then you want to probably factor in um maybe a couple more months after that before. Uh a city manager is in and then they can make a decision on who their treasurer is going to be. Um so um to be safe, I think you should do at least four months of uh whatever the. That your invoice is for.
Okay, will do.
Any challenge to that, I don't, I mean, any other thoughts on that?
No, I agree.
Okay. Uh and and again, so just for our citizens who are listening, for the budget, the goal of the budget to be. As close to, you know, um accurate as possible, of course, you know, different things happen throughout the year. Uh but you don't want it, your budget to be, you know, so far off base, because then you come back to us and say, hey, why did you go so far over? So we want to present to you guys um a more realistic budget uh that reflects what the city. Cities revenues are and expenses are, so um just for context, I'm big on context. All right, uh I think we're good with finance. Uh I think we're making good time to. Executive Office. I I'm sorry, just to go back, the I I think I know this, I read it, but my memory is kind of fuzzy. Do the stipends for the mayor and the um council members, does that reflect? The new stipend that was voted on the last council?
Uh the, you know, the ones here do reflect that.
Okay, alright, sorry, got a little bit fuzzy there.
The only one that had to be changed was the one in the uh council office and they changed it, that was one of the changes.
Okay. Uh Executive Office, any questions related to that? I think the. The mayor's conference and training budget looks more realistic than the council members. Is that six thousand instead of two?
Yes.
But everything else. No? Okay, well, the last one on uh uh initial agenda was. General Operations. Any questions? What was the uh jump and then decrease in uh unemployment assurance? I know we shot up in FY twenty one and then we're coming back down in FY twenty two.
Um that too, I'll have to look into, but um I don't know if this shows could assist us here. I am looking at this thinking that um then we had. Um more staff that we were paying unemployment for. And this year, we don't have that amount, but Miss Schultz, maybe you could speak on that possibly. Okay, so.
There she is.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my mouth stopped working, um. We really haven't had a decrease in staff, we've, because of COVID, we've definitely lost one. Um we're getting ready to recruit for as of today. Um we went through a period of time that we um didn't pay salaries that we furloughed. All the goal room crew members um from, I wanted to say, Ms. Councilwoman Jones, correct me if I'm wrong. But I think they went furloughed in November, so they were furloughed from November and they're just gradually coming on board now. Um. Everyone that, everyone that has left, we are either in the process of recruiting or will recruit for. So I'm not sure what the um the decrease was, from at least from my end, I don't know.
Alright. Any other questions? For the general fund? From General Operations, sir. Okay. I think I'll leave it here, um because I know at at least, you know, a lot of us um. Studied what was in the agenda and it is. Approaching nine o'clock, uh Councilwoman Ferguson.
Yes, uh Councilwoman Jones. Um. Do you remember, I'm thinking, um I'm looking at the discretionary fund for um. Um did we reduce it um as it pertains to the COVID, was it originally five hundred at one time? Can you remember?
I think it was for the mayor that he had a discretionary fund of five hundred and then we had. I thought ours was three hundred and it was reduced to two.
Yeah, they, yeah, so I'm I'm looking at the mayor's and it says three hundred now and I thought he had five hundred.
Oh, that's under the executive office?
Yeah. Let me see.
Yeah, it's three hundred.
Have we increased that to five hundred?
How much, I'm not sure how much has even been spent in the mayor's discretionary fund, if anything.
Okay, you can check it, check it and see, I know I I use a little, um but. It is possible that it wasn't because I I know I didn't use much of mine either, so I I was just wondering. As we're going back to normal, whether we would go back to what we normally have, but that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions about a council?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman here.
Yeah, I just want Mr. Stewart to know I sent you the email with the uh five, with the uh May eighteenth budget.
Thank you very much, um tomorrow I'll look into it and start it to work on it. I will reply to you as well.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you, yes.
Mr. Stewart, uh when you reply, can you reply to the uh the whole council, please?
Definitely will do.
Thanks. Alright, so a couple things, I'm sorry, Councilman Fareed.
Because we have the meeting on Thursday and I I thought about it too late in this meeting, I think it might be helpful if while. Um we're discussing that we we have the budget up on the screen, we share a screen so that. The citizens can see exactly where we are and what we're talking about. I know they might have a copy of it, but I thought that might be helpful for. Yeah.
I think that. Can I say something as well? Sorry about that, sorry, Councilwoman Fareed, I was going to say, I think that would be helpful for council um members as well. Because as you saw, I was looking at one part of the same document, I was looking at page seven, while. You know, President Curtis and others may have been looking at page twenty one, so I think that's a great idea, I didn't know if we can do that. I think we could, but I just didn't know, so I think if that can be explored, that will be very advantageous and. Um adding this additional layer to this is for Thursday in the interim for council or um. I think it was Ms. Schultz who was thinking about this and also Council President, if we can do the inventory for the computer and laptops to see. Who will need and who won't need, so when we come back on Thursday, um we will be able to truly look at that number to see if the three thousand is. Um enough or if it should be increased, if that's okay, respectfully.
Ms. Schultz?
Um I will reach out tomorrow to T spec, but um uh they're not the fastest. Snail in the block, in the box or anything else, but I will reach out to them and try and stress to them that the urgency that I need the information. By closing business tomorrow, um uh that's the best I can do with with T spec.
Okay.
Yeah.
And 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 that's fine, I know, you know, with third parties is, you know, sometimes you don't get back in time and. In the interest of transparency, you know, we we have time to to work on this uh to present. Uh a complete budget to the the citizens. Advertise it uh and then vote on it at the appropriate time, so. Uh we do have some time, if we can't get it by Wednesday, hopefully we can, but if we can't, uh then we can. Um call another special meeting to make sure we're having everything uh laid out before the citizens. So. Just two things that I wanted to to note, we did not get through everything, so uh we will advertise another meeting for Thursday. Um we won't try to keep everybody online long, so if we can't get through that. Uh as long as it takes for us to present to the city uh a robust and transparent budget, that's what we'll do. Uh in the normal course of business, we, this budget would have been passed a while ago. Uh but since it's landed in a a a lot, we want to make sure that's transparent as possible. As it relates to the ARPA funds, uh as I stated before, citizens will have uh an opportunity. Uh I will uh first encourage you to go out uh and research it, uh see what it is, um do your own homework. On it and the the council welcomes your ideas uh on how we could uh spend those funds. I know um uh Mr. Huff Junior has been and uh Chelsea O'Corr has been a a big proponent of youth programs. Things like that and this uh Alita. Um of of youth programs, things like that, so go out there, see what it is. Uh see what guidance you can find on it, we're doing our homework here, uh and we welcome you. And we welcome your thoughts on, on how we can allocate those funds. And as y'all know, we're here to serve at the pleasure of the citizens. So we don't want to make any decisions that are, don't include your input. So and Councilwoman Fareed, I believe, has put something in the chat where you could click and learn more about it. So yeah, again, encourage you to do so. All right. Everybody good? Mr. Harry? Any other questions or concerns?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Uh, Councilman Hairston?
I'm good.
Councilwoman Delmar? I said Delmar because I realized I was butchering your name, so I just stopped.
I know. And for all citizens, so I, I'm fine, I'm good. And for all citizens, my married name is Delamar. I go by Guillaume Delamar or Guillaume, so I'm fine. So.
You know, it's a transition from calling, going to Cat and to Councilman Gil.
And I just, and, and for, for some of my citizens who are probably in my age group, I, in over 40 plus, if you remember Benson, the show Benson, the actor Robert Gill, that's my last name. So, thank you.
Councilwoman Jones, are you good?
I'm good. Thank you, sir, for asking.
Councilman Fareed?
Yes, I'm good, thank you.
Vice President, Councilwoman Ferguson?
I am good, President. Thank you.
All right, it is 8:53 and this special work session is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, blessings.
Blessings, yeah.